I will start the meeting by calling your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. If you will join me in rising for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Beth Roll.
Granquist.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Clausen.
Here.
Muirin.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Faust.
Here.
File.
Here.
Okay, with that, would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
And also approval of the full agenda.
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
All right, moving to public hearings and related action. We'll open Action Item Number 27 on your agenda, public hearing to receive comments on adoption of the 2017 comprehensive plan for the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, and that area in which the city is exercising its extraterritorial jurisdiction, and repeal of the 2001 City of Norfolk comprehensive plan along with its 2006 transportation and 2015 energy element updates by adopting and amending Section 19-5 of Norfolk City Code. And to open the discussion, I think we hear from Valerie.
Yes, thank you. The comprehensive plan is almost a year since we've started it, so we kind of figured that about right, nine to 12 months to get a comp plan done. Tonight, it's been before Planning Commission and recommended for approval to you all. And on the phone and on the screen, we have Olson Associates and Deep Planet planners, the consultants who helped us with this. They have a presentation to go through the main elements of this new comprehensive plan.
Okay. Val, can you tell us who's on the phone here from Olson and Deep Planet?
Avery Oldmans from Olson Associates and Dave Knobick from Deep Planet.
Okay. Guys, can you hear us? Avery, Dave?
Yeah, yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, well, we're going to turn it over to you to walk us through the comp plan.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. It's good to be there with you, at least virtually, tonight. And I hope we'll get through this presentation relatively quickly so that in regards to public hearing and any questions you have, we have plenty of time to have discussion afterwards. What I'd like to do, Avery's kind of got control of the screen and things like that, so as I go through the presentation, you might hear me give him a cue every once in a while to put aside, just like now. So what we'll do, very briefly, I just introduced that there have been three primary members of the consulting team that has been a part of the project up to date. Myself is the principal planner on the project team. Then Avery, who is also on the phone, who's the primary author of much of the future land use sections and other elements of the plan. I primarily worked on visioning and on the implementation section. And then Jessica Sock, who was at a number of the public meetings with us throughout the project, who had served as the project manager. So Avery, if you'll quick. There we go. When it comes to the comprehensive plan, this has kind of been an overview for many of you, but I want to make sure we touch base on this because we do, with a comprehensive plan, have certain requirements that we need to meet in the sense of what state statutes say in regard to contents. And you can see listed here in a number of bullet points, the principal elements of a comprehensive plan in Nebraska, and that being the land use and transportation and community facilities sections. An interesting section that's relatively new due to state legislation there in Nebraska is the energy element, which we'll touch upon later just a little bit. And then another piece of this is the potential annexation strategy or plan for the future, which corresponds with the future land use element and the growth element that we're promoting here in the comp plan. From the standpoint of what goes on with the plan, the Plan Commission is the body that is within the city that primarily guides and monitors development of the plan itself, and they adopt the plan. But it's also before you tonight also for adoption, and we feel that that's an important element, that the Plan Commission and governing body are all on the same page when it comes to looking at growth 10 and 20 years down the road. Our project timeframe, we've been working on this, as Valerie kind of mentioned, for about a year now, since February of last year, and it's involved a good implementation process in the sense, or I'm sorry, engagement process, in the sense of people being involved in the comprehensive planning effort. Avery? Oops, sorry. There we go. Ah, there we go. Within the plan itself, then, I wanted to just give you an overview of the content as it's arranged. We won't spend a lot of time in the introductions section of the plan. This is really a piece of the plan that looks at existing conditions and analyzes the community in its current state, but also from the standpoint of historic trends and development patterns. So you can see there, the introduction of the comprehensive plan really revolves around history and demographics and the physical conditions, as well as the current state of community facilities and services and the delivery of those to the community. The primary part of the plan really, and what most people are interested in, is from the vision section to plan implementation. And it's really important for us as planners, providing you this document, that we make a tie between the vision and goals and the plan, all the way through those elements, such as the energy element, transportation, and future land use elements, into plan implementation. And I think that's a key part. When I get further into the presentation, or after Avery has reviewed some of the other elements, I'm going to talk about plan implementation because this is a place where many communities have a difficult time. They may come to agreement around what the future looks like and the vision that they have for their community, but then when it comes to implementation, many times they can get overwhelmed by it, or in fact, you know, find themselves kind of stuck on one or two priorities, and then the plan gets lost. And we don't want that to happen in this case. Avery? Typically, the comprehensive plan is really oriented around a few key items. I think it's important to note this. In Nebraska, the comprehensive plan is really a policy guide. It's not a law per se. In some states, the comprehensive plan carries the weight of the law, and that makes it very different than what we use it here primarily in the Midwest as a policy guide. We're looking out 10 to 20 years at the future of the community, recognizing that during those 10 to 20 years, you're going to have some changes, some of which may not have been on radar when we did the comprehensive plan. The important part, though, of the plan during this time is to look at it from the standpoint of how it can support additional grant funding or other funding requests, because you did go through a public engagement process. So many of the items, when it comes to the vision, the goals, and the implementation strategies, that public engagement process becomes a key part of justifying grant and funding requests. Many times, especially for federal funding, they look to not only what's a goal of the community, but did you follow a engagement process to get to that goal? I know award points for that type of request where public engagement was incorporated. And you can see with the final three bullet points there, this is an item that is for use by the Planning and Zowing Commission, but I'm going to stress and underline, and especially in a community like Norfolk, that what you have in your community is not just used by Plan Commission or the city, but it should also be used by the private development community and the citizens of Norfolk. And we'll talk about that when it comes to implementation. For instance, as the last bullet point goes, as work program of goals, objectives, and strategies, and I'm going to highlight that many of those go beyond the auspices of the city. So, Avery? I think Avery's going to take it over from here for a little bit, and I'll come back near the end with the plan implementation section.
Thanks, Dave. Hello, everybody. My name is Avery Oldmans with Olson Associates. Many of you have seen me throughout the planning process these past few months. Wanted to give, in the context of this presentation, a brief overview as to the process that have brought us to this point, which was primarily involved with public engagement. And so that public engagement took many different forms. First and foremost, I wanted to identify some of the specific groups other than general public, which were consulted during the process. Firstly, a steering committee, which performed those roles, identified their advising project direction and notifying and encouraged public participation, as well as providing review and commentary throughout the process. Secondarily, we identified and contacted a number of different stakeholder groups, which included those many different categories listed there under that second bullet point. And then thirdly, we identified and formed a series of focus groups. And those focus groups included a number of different community members, but the focus, as the term implies, the focus of each of these groups was to discuss a particular concern or issue, namely the community vision, economic development, infrastructure or government, the community, environment, and health, and then as well as neighborhood development or housing. First of these, public engagement events was held, was termed the Planning 101, held in March of last year. And the purpose of this was to give an overview of existing conditions that were corrected thus far, as well as to define the general focus of the planning process and identify those steps that were upcoming so as to better organize and encourage feedback and participation in these groups. Some of the different subpoints here identifies the overall issues that were discussed during this meeting in March. Moving on from that point, we returned to the community between May 24th and 25th to hold the focus groups meetings. This is the community vision. These subpoints here are just kind of the highlights, if you will, as far as the feedback and the comments that we received during that process and during that focus group of community vision. And so some of the areas of greatest concern identified during that process were recruiting of workforce amenities to keep young families in the city, strategic planned growth, identifying quality of life concerns, identifying issues surrounding median incomes, and by extension, mid-income housing. Sense of community was an issue brought up, identifying the possibility of a technology corridor involving the youth in the community, making Norfolk unique, the implementation of complete streets across the state, and identifying Norfolk as a destination. Secondarily, the economic development, commerce, entrepreneurial, and downtown focus group identified some additional points, again pertaining to that focus group topic, identifying the need for a downtown study, identifying the need to improve or supplement housing within the community, identifying the possibility and/or need to provide riverfront development along the portion of Norfolk Elkhorn River, which passes through downtown, communicating the vision of land use property owners, multi-level parking, and then identifying that 275 corridor for improvement. Infrastructure and government was another focus group. Some of the top five issues are listed there below: regulations, environmental issues, duplication between different bureaucratic levels, spend more time in the community, that is, the person to live here, and then coordination between those various service providers, making sure that there is a synergy among the people working for and within the community. Another focus group identifying the topic of community, environment, and health, identified a number of different key words, buzzwords associated with quality of life, keeping Norfolk unique, identifying the potential or need, if you will, for a signature project within the community, and each of those pertaining to, and from some level, those sub-bullet points listed there before you. The fifth of five focus groups that we put together was one which focused on neighborhood development or housing. Some of the specific areas of interest, comment, if you will, that came up were areas where the community can improve as pertains to providing amenities for housing within the community. Also, some areas of success identified, or some recent progress within the community that were seen as being worthy of being moved forward or being replicated in other areas are green space, identifying the closeness of neighbors, keeping traffic limited, ensuring a quiet community, and making sure that all access of the community are accessible, all areas of the community are accessible to the community, rather. All right, subsequently, after those May 24th and 25th meetings, we returned to the community with a number of land use scenarios in August of last year. The first of three land use scenarios identified focused on a residential expansion of growth, or that is, it gave greater significance, both in terms of land priority and in terms of the amount of area, amount of land identified for the provision of residential growth. Subsequently, other land use types within this scenario were filled in after the areas sought to provide the best expansion of residential growth were formulated. Some of the main points, if you will, of this land use scenario, as I said, include the focus on new residential growth, that growth primarily locating to the north and west of existing Norfolk, identifying Highway 275 as extension of commercial services. New industrial land within this concept are focused to the north of the community, first along the railroad corridor to the north and east, and secondarily, along the Highway 81 corridor north of existing Norfolk. And then a number of parts were identified primarily locating adjacent to the canal on the east side of town. A second of three land use scenarios identified the employment growth scenario, and so much in the same way where we prioritize and first identified land for residential growth in this scenario, we employ a similar strategy for identifying employment-type land use types. And so the priority here was on industrial growth and/or heavy commercial growth. The purpose of each of these scenarios was to test and try different ways in which this community can grow, could grow, and then obviously to receive feedback from residents as well as city staff, steering committee, and stakeholders in that respect. Some of the main points of this employment growth scenario is that, first and foremost, industrial growth, as I said, was prioritized. Areas identified for such significant growth are, again, along the railroad corridor to the north and east of Norfolk, along the Omaha Avenue corridor, and to a certain extent, along the Small Spur Railroad that is located just south of the Omaha corridor, Omaha Avenue corridor, excuse me. And then additional industrial land immediately east of the airport on the east side of Highway 81. Again, Highway 275 is seen as the logical choice for significant, the most significant commercial expansion. In addition to that area, the intersection of Norfolk Avenue and Victory Road/Highway 35 is seen as a potential for new commercial growth. And then lastly, new residential growth is identified primarily in the areas south of the college campus and as well as along areas immediately south of the river, south of the Tahauntsuka Park. Moving on, the third, sorry, back on me, third of three land use scenarios was one which identified infill as a primary concern. The term infill refers to the desire and/or method by which new development is incorporated primarily within areas that are already developed, but as of yet have not been built. And so the best example within the city of Norfolk are those areas along the west side of town, there are significant farmland immediately north of the hospital, south of the golf course, and just east of the golf course. So that would be a priority, such land would be priority for the provision of all land use types. Some of the different focuses or highlights, if you will, of this development procedure scenario is, as I said, that land for new development is prioritized among those areas that are already served by city infrastructure, that is, areas immediately next to significant and paved roadways, municipal services, and the like. The downtown within this development scenario was identified and prioritized for new development and redevelopment combined with that referenced riverfront designation, identifying the possibility of that Norfolk Elkhorn River for increased aesthetic development along that riverfront. New commercial within this land use scenario is primarily contained within those areas along the Highway 275 corridor that are otherwise subdivided for just that purpose but have yet to develop. Addition to this, there's limited new commercial identified north of Benjamin Avenue. And then lastly, new residential, excuse me, new industrial development is identified first along the railroad to the northeast of the community and in addition to the east of the community, just south of the 275 entrance into the city. Some of the feedback that was received from that, obviously identified where those scenarios were hitting on something positive, as well as where we were hitting on something negative. And so then, we took those comments back to refine and fine-tune that future land use map, but we also identified the feedback from the focus group as well as the feedback received from those land use scenarios to develop a series of vision and goals. The One Norfolk Moving Forward is the vision statement, and then correspondingly, there are a number of goals and objectives attached to each goal, and those goals and objective statements would are organized into four general categories. That is abundant economic opportunity, outstanding quality of life, extraordinary service provision, and strategic physical growth. We returned to the community again in November of last year. Some of the main considerations, in addition to obviously the feedback that we got up to this date, had to do with the subpoints listed below. Feedback we received from private development, so having some understanding as to how private landowners intended to use their land, identifying and understanding those city-owned properties and how they can be utilized by the city and the community to move forward, understanding the existing infrastructure, that is, those roads, those sewer lines, water lines, sidewalks, and the like, to understand how the city can make best use of those resources which have already clicked into the ground in the community. As I said, understanding that public feedback, the recent and proposed development of properties, significant properties of any type that were brought forward to that point, understanding the issues surrounding the local economy and what is working in the community and what hasn't. And then of course, understanding the topography around Norfolk and those recent events tied to the flooding of the Elkhorn River, and understanding that the future land use plan should best organize and set up the community for future success and avoidance of such catastrophic events. Fulmination of that future land use plan is referenced in the lower right there. Some of the major themes of this preferred or future land use plan are, as such, riverfront, prioritization of mixed-use developments within the downtown, a mixed commerce buffer to be used between some of the more industrial areas where those industrial areas come into close contact with the other commercial or residential portions of the community. In addition, we went above and beyond the land as identified by the population projection to be identified as a quote-unquote "reserve." And so these areas are identified as industrial reserve, residential reserve, commercial reserve, and mixed commerce reserves for the purpose of identifying future land if and when it is needed to accommodate the city as it grows, above and beyond the ability of this plan to foresee the future. Lastly, focus on new residential was within areas that were adjacent or within the urbanized areas of Norfolk, again, to attempt to accommodate the provision of new residential lands that would apply the lowest cost to city service extensions. In addition to the future land use map, we also have a couple of different, two different portions of the report which attempt to further define the intention of this future land use plan. First and foremost is the definition of each land use. And so the map that you see on the screen in front of you has a number of different land use types. We provide a portion of the report, as I said, which indicates the primary and secondary use associated with each of these land use types. So as an extension, those primary uses are intended to be those that are recommended by this plan. Those secondary uses are those that could potentially be viable options for the city to consider in some future scenario. Secondarily, there are the development area guidelines. What this does is it references the different districts which the community was divided up to, divided up into for the purposes of their plan, of this plan. There were 13 districts, and the purpose of this was to redefine how that individual area is to be considered as it relates to the development. For an example, the downtown area would have different considerations as it pertains to each land use type than would the western or eastern entrance to the community, which is far less developed and far more rural. This leads us into the implementation strategy, which I'm going to transition now over to Dave, but the implication here is obviously, having identified what this future land use plan is, we then want to provide the community and this report a way in which that those goals as identified within that future land use plan can be achieved. I'll move forward more for Dave.
All right. Thanks, Avery. The graphic that was up before, just that slide before this one, kind of gives you an idea of what we're talking about from the standpoint of a framework for implementation. Ultimately, the plan can identify actions and priorities, responsibilities, and potential funding, but all of those four pillars, if you will, need to work together in order to accomplish your implementation strategy. So I think it's an important graphic to hold up here for just a second because it really is what we're trying to accomplish in the last 30 pages or so of the plan, is show that linkage, again, back to the vision statement and directly into actions so that you can implement some of these things in the near future. So Avery, if you'll switch slides there. In the strategy itself, in those last 30 pages, there's a number of different sections, and the bullet points outline those sections, and I'm going to go over them a little bit in more detail here because I think it's important to understand that it's not just about identifying actions and things like that, it's also about what's the commitment or the commitment of the community to implement the plan. Avery alluded to this earlier, we have, you know, four different goal themes, if you will, under that One Norfolk Moving Forward vision. And then within that, we have 14 other objectives, and we have 55 action strategies, if you will, that are tied to implementation. What we tried to do is frame those action strategies, if you will, within some practices and some foundational elements that the community could take moving forward in order to have best through implementation. best through implementation. And so, in the back part of the plan, and if you're, if you have copies before you or you have the ability to look at a copy around page four, one forty-seven, one hundred forty-seven of the plan, we start out about talking about implementation best practices. And there are seven of those practices that are identified in this plan. And they're not exciting things, but they are things that set sound foundations. So understanding what the capacity of your organizational structure is for addressing some of these things is a critical best practice. Getting that understanding, identifying where you might need help within the organization or where you might identify complementary components outside of the city to help go ahead and implement the plan. You want to align your regulatory and financial policies with the plan. So it's one thing to have a vision, but it's another thing to look at your zoning code or your subdivision regulations or some of the financial incentive policies and align those with the goals and the vision that are shown in the future land use plan or in the content of the document in order to support or to strategically implement certain activities. That's a key element. Sometimes communities get lost in their financial policies and their zoning regulations because they've tried to address something as one type of development form or one type of development throughout the whole community. The nice thing about this plan, one of the things that I appreciate about is we've broken the city into districts and have development guidelines for each of those districts. So certain policies may better fit the downtown versus Highway 275. A third best practice is to set and manage realistic expectations. Understand that we've put these strategies into a matrix, and I'll show it on a slide, a couple of slides from now, you'll see this matrix. But the idea is to be realistic about what you can accomplish and setting that expectation bar so that you stretch in order to reach things proactively, but at the same time, don't set yourself up for failure. You want to remain flexible to changing conditions. The plan itself, we try to do the best we can, but I will say this, we're kind of like meteorologists. You know, that, that one hour forecast, we can get pretty well. You get out twenty years ahead of time, there are many different things that can happen in a community that were not anticipated in the plan. So it's really important to remain flexible as changing conditions happen. Point two, the two thousand and eight to two thousand and eleven period of time, many plans at the time that were even being done in two thousand and five, two thousand and six did not see the financial collapse that occurred. And so their plans had to adjust for that. They had to figure out a way to adjust the vision and the implementation efforts to match their market conditions. Number six, be to continuously and proactively communicate the vision. So one of the key things for the planning commission and for the staff as well as you as community leaders is to be out there and proactively communicate this vision. This is what we're working towards as a community, and these are the actions that we're going to take so that the community has an understanding of what it is or the priorities for physical development in the future. That becomes really critical because when a person is before you on a rezoning case or they're before you on some other development effort, they are looking for that vision and how does the community vision and their vision match with that? And if it doesn't, then there needs to be further discussion until you find a solution. Item number seven is then to develop leadership that provides continuity throughout the long-term implementation process. And that really points to the idea that there's a continuous commitment to planning. This plan is a start point. What we would hope as consultants is that you use it as a living document so that you don't have to start over in another ten years or fifteen years or twenty years. But we really hope is that through the leadership groups in the community being involved in this, this plan gets updated on an annual basis from the standpoint of what's changed or its condition. And maybe at a five-year update point, there's major rewrites to the goals or the visions because things in the community have changed. So hopefully there's a continuity about that continues to be up next year or six months. In addition to those best practices, then, we have some foundational steps that the community can take. And I talked about policy alignment activities, and I think one of the biggest ones is obviously to update the regulatory and development codes that you have in the community currently and get them in alignment with the vision and goals in the future land use plan. The other thing is to assess that organizational capacity and what is your participatory effectiveness? How do we get people engaged and keep them engaged in this discussion of the future of the community? And then to intentionally seek and broaden plan ownership and engagement. People cannot look at this plan as just the city of Norfolk's government plan. It is not just that. It does set the stage for actions that you, the governing body, will take on and the staff will take on. But more importantly, the community needs to own this because it's dependent on private market-based systems working within the community as well as the public sector working within the community. So I think that's important. A third part of the implementation strategy then is this implementation attitude. There's really three components to it. And they're, they're critical components. One is having a problem-solving environment. So ensuring that it's not an us-versus-them mentality. It really is about what's best for the community and everybody that's around the table needs to be in that problem-solving mode. How do we balance regulations and promote desirable development and livable qualities within the community? We've got to be flexible, but yet we've got to be somewhat predictable. And we have to be supportive of sustainable solutions and other things that may be viable alternatives, but not necessarily mandates within the community. The second part of that attitude is a partnership mentality, understanding that the best way to leverage tools and resources is that the public and private sector is working together. Both elements have different strengths and weaknesses when it comes to the various resources that are available to them. And by working together in a partnership, it's much easier to leverage financial and economic development policy and work towards strategic public investment, but also sound private investment. We want to make sure that that private investment's dependable and that the right tools are being applied for various forms of development actions. And then the third part of that implementation attitude is really being proactive and strategic. Don't wait for something to come in your front door. Those days have passed to a certain extent. You need to understand the strengths that you have as a community, leverage those strengths, proactively and strategically go out beyond the community, out into the region and the nation with those advances and targeting various development types and forms that you believe are appropriate for your community. So those are, those are the attitudes under which a lot of this activity has to occur. That's why the type, again, that partnership mentality being key and then the proactive and strategic approach. So Avery, if you'll go from there. The next slide. What I do want to point to is a couple tangible things within the implementation piece too that I think are critical. One is the annexation kind of guide here that's up before you. This guide is really one that's general in nature. It doesn't point to specific properties per se, but it does prioritize areas where it's important to preserve for urban growth or to look at it for ecological growth area for the community, both in the near term and long term. And so when we look at this, I just want to briefly put in here that when you're considering annexing an area or not, there's a couple of values that should guide that. Now, one is the value of providing and extending municipal services and facilities, understanding the cost-benefit ratio when you approach annexation. Are you extending water and sewer to a point where the number of users that you're going to get or the benefit back for that cost really doesn't work well for you? So you want to understand the value of that. You want to understand the value of protecting physical features or resources or unique qualities. Your well-protection area for, for water resources. Annexing that area, but maybe understanding that the development is very limited, that it can occur there because the number one goal is to protect that resource for the community. The value of incorporating existing development and proposed new development. So when you're weighing this, is this a development form that you want to have within your community potentially? And if so, does it, again, need that cost-benefit of value above? And then finally, preserving future growth and utility service areas. So those are the four kinds of values you want to consider as a framework to this map. So you can see here, we've got phases one through four and they're broken up into segments and they're represented by the various shades of gray. And obviously, you can see the highest priority areas are those that are closest to the current city limits, but they vary in location in the sense of what we see from a growth standpoint in the future. So this is intended to be a guide for you all to look at as you consider annexing, whether that annexation comes in as a petition from somebody or you're looking to proactively annex an area. Avery, next slide. There we go. So I mentioned earlier also the implementation matrix here, and we provided this tool to you. And you'll notice a couple of things about it. First, just the way that the matrix is lined out, we've organized it around the various four themes. Then we have the various objectives on your matrix.
Guys, I'll interrupt you right there, Dave.
Yes?
I don't think we've switched over to the next slide for the matrix.
Didn't come over.
The, the one that you were looking at says implementation matrix. It's the one that I've got.
Okay.
Do you see that now?
We're still looking at implementation guide.
Okay. All right, mine showed up on my end, Avery, so.
There we go.
Yeah?
We're good now.
Got it?
Yep.
You got it now? Okay. Great. I don't know what the delay was there, but it was showing up on mine, so I just kept on rolling. Sorry. So from a matrix standpoint, again, it's organized and this is just one, one page, if you will, of the matrix where you see the theme at the very top, the various objectives or action areas are then listed. And what we did is we then tried to identify what we thought were ongoing strategies, short-term strategies and long-term strategies. Again, with the idea that ongoing means that it's something you should be doing and continue with doing. Short-term is really that one to five-year period and long-term is the five to ten-year period. So this is our shot at giving you an idea of rough priorities. The final column, though, that we've left blank, we've left that intentional because we believe in order for this to be a working document, this is the part of the document where an implementation committee can be formed around this matrix and can identify various leadership groups or partnerships that could work in these areas together and identify particular funding sources and those kinds of things. Now, in the, in the implementation section, we've provided a comprehensive list of potential funding sources, but we didn't link those to specific strategies. We really believe that this is an exercise that should occur coming out of some type of an implementation group that you would formulate that helps to spread the ownership of this plan and helps to spread the responsibilities of this plan throughout the community. So that's why this is laid out the way it is. There's a, there's a purpose in it, and we would hope that that would be one of the next steps that would occur out of this planning process. Avery, if you'll go to the next slide. It's a great transition to the next step. So, one is to complete the review of the comprehensive plan, which is part of what tonight is for you as a governing body and for us as consultants, not just about this presentation, but certainly to hear your comments and questions and continue the review of the comp plan to finalize that. With those comments and questions in hand, we can do the final edits for the plan and then we can provide the document in a formatted manner that's suitable for final product delivery to you. So those are kind of the next steps there. But again, I want to go back to that other idea of implementation. That implementation step, that first step, is really one that the community of Norfolk needs to take under your guidance as a governing body. So with that, I believe we are done and ready for questions. I think that's the next slide.
All right.
It goes, yep.
Thank, thank you, Avery. Thank you, Dave. When we say comprehensive, we're not kidding, as you can tell. It's a thorough examination of opportunities for community growth in industrial, retail, residential, business, recreational areas. And I'll remind everybody, this is a public hearing, so if there are any comments or questions from the public, we would welcome those now.
Good evening, I'm Jim Cox and I represent SWAD. I'll sign in here quick. And SWAD owns a piece of property in the west 275 corridor. Specifically, it's bounded by Michigan Avenue on the north, ShopCo on the east, and Twenty-Fifth Street on the west. And under the new proposed comp plan, this property would switch from commercial to business park. The SWAD partnership believes that this piece of property is better characterized as commercial based on the character of the area and also the current zoning of the properties that surround the SWAD piece of property. I thought it was interesting during the presentation that there was a quote from the commercial focus group that when they talked about 275 area, the quote was, "Where else would you think for commercial?" And that's what we believe as well. If you look at the piece of property and the zoning, we're in between C3 to the north, C1, which is ShopCo to the east, the triangle, which actually borders our piece of property south of Michigan, that's C3. To the west, it's R3 and C3. And if you take it all the way out on the bypass, that's all commercial there. I thought it was also interesting during the infill talk that that's the one area that they wanted to grow commercial was along 275 to look at significant road rate, roadways and where there were city services. And that just describes our piece of property. Under the current matrix for business park, we wouldn't be allowed, we're really restricted on our retail. Specifically, no general retail, no automotive retail, no automotive parts, no car wash, no variety stores, no department stores. And if you look, that's exactly what borders us. Cannon Maytag is out there, Langill Chevrolet, the GMC dealership. ShopCo borders us right on the east, and that's a general retail store. So we would submit, we would respectfully submit that you do not change characteristic of commercial, change it to business park, but keep it as commercial.
Thank you. Any questions for Jim? We appreciate that input. Maybe we can talk a little bit about the idea there and a transition between industrial area and the commercial area. Val, do you want to add some comments to that or maybe Avery and Dave do?
I can start the response. It's not technically called business park. We've named it mixed commercial. And that is supposed to be the combination. Like he said, there's C3 to the north, there's I3 to the south. That mixed commercial is supposed to be a designation in the comprehensive plan that allows C3, business park, and industrial as a mixture, that transition zone between C3 and I3. And so, what Jim Cox was reading off was the business park zoning category, which is different than the mixed commerce comp plan designation. They're not the same thing.
So, what you're saying is within a mixed commercial designation, there may be an opportunity for variety store, retail, some of the things that Jim was talking about.
Yes, because the comprehensive plan doesn't actually give you your land uses. It, it doesn't set the law. That's what your zoning category is. So, out there in that mixed commerce, you could technically have a C3 parcel next to an I1 parcel, depending on what wants to go there because that's really your intermediate transition zone between that heavy I3 and your heavy commercial C3.
Yeah, go ahead. Dave?
I was just, I'm sorry, I thought I lost you on the connection. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a couple of comments and then Avery's got a comment on it. You know, there was confusion when the first draft of the plan came out about a month or so ago. We did have a business park category in here, and that business park category where there was confusion was between the zoning category and, as Val had mentioned, and what we were trying to achieve in the comp plan. And that's why this mixed commerce designation had come up. Primarily, as, as Valerie said, you know, this is to allow a lot of flexibility in the uses that could occur there, recognizing that there may be some commercial uses that go there, but they don't enjoy the same high visibility that the properties do that front 275. But we wanted to give those properties as much flexibility But we wanted to give those properties as much flexibility as we could as to whether a commercial use or an industrial use would be allowed there. So that's why the designation was changed to this mixed commerce type, and then the definition in there is intended to allow the flexibility as Val was indicating per variety of different commercial and industrial uses. I don't know if Avery wanted to add to that or not.
I'll add a brief comment, just to kind of follow up with the initial comment from Mr. Cox. Much of the approach as it pertains to industrial areas within the community revolved around a couple of different elements. First of all, a significant amount of the community's employment and tax base are involved with the industrial, or I should say, the employment. A significant amount of local employment is involved with industrial land, combined with the significant requirements of any new or extension of existing industrial land. Industrial use as a individual group is the most, has the greatest likelihood of creating conflicts with its neighbors due to traffic or ambient noises, dust, what have you. Also, too, those types of industrial uses have the largest needs in terms of municipal services. And so access to significant sewer lines and access to significant water, significant roadways are paramount. Additionally, there's also a need to identify areas that have suitable topography to industrial development. And to cut to the quick here, so to speak, there are two areas within the community that really fit all the categories necessary to accommodate new industrial ground, and that is to the north of the community along the railroad tracks, the north and east, that is, and then south of 275 along Omaha Avenue corridor. Those are two areas of the community that have easy access for community leaders and future developments to implement industrial use. And when we do that, really, those two instances create the most difficult scenario, if you will, along that 275 corridor, because whereas the railroad corridor to the northeast is concerned, there's little other competing land use types that are in that area. And so that gives a lot of latitude for development to occur out there. Whereas within this, the area that we're talking about, the Omaha Avenue to 275 area has other significant pressures. Obviously, there are lands that have already been subdivided. And so the attempt here is to identify and maintain those areas along Omaha Avenue into the south, which can take advantage of the adequate topography, adequate planetary sewer and water, the proximity to significant roads, and then also allow for a buffer, as was mentioned before, of varying land use types ranging from light industry to the heavy commercial, if you will, to bring us up to that 275 and to identify and prioritize those areas along 275 that have the greatest visibility, as Dave said.
Appreciate that clarity. Thank you, guys. Any other comments, questions from the public?
Maybe just have one question, Val could clarify what...
Jim, could you come up to the mic, please?
I guess I was curious if you could just clarify for me what types of uses we'll be in amidst, if that is what it goes to, just so that SWAD, so that we know what type we would be able to sell to or how to develop that piece of property, and if there is a current, if it's currently listed in the matrix.
That's going to be the next step after the comprehensive plan is approved. Then we will go back, take the recommendations of what that description of mixed commerce is in that area and the descriptions in the comprehensive plan, and revise it from there.
And just about how long do you think that that will take, that process? I'm just curious.
I'm hoping within a year.
Yeah.
Less would be better, but it's, I mean, the zoning code is probably a close to a 200-page document itself, too.
Yeah, and I understand that. And I guess from SWAD's position is that keeps us in limbo for another year inventorying that piece of property, because any buyer that wants to look out there, excuse me, is always going to question, is that use permissible on that piece of property? And so given a year, six months even, that means that SWAD will have to inventory that piece of property, not knowing what could actually go there.
Well, not necessarily, if I could, because you actually will be before Planning Commission tomorrow to zone it to C3.
Yeah.
Which is an allowed zoning in that mixed commerce.
I got that, okay.
So that's what we were saying, that zoning and the comprehensive plan aren't necessarily the same.
Yep.
Because zoning actually gives you your allowed uses, not necessarily the comprehensive plan.
I understand. Well, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jim. An important point to make, what we're talking about here are land use designations, not zoning policies necessarily. In this comprehensive plan, as has been stated, we want to use as a roadmap, as a guide, but that will take steps to process, and it's, our zoning policies are distinct from the comprehensive plan. With that, any other questions or comments regarding the process? I guess I'd have one real quick, and I don't want to belabor this, but I think, you know, this was an important process. There was a heavy focus on public input. Dave, Avery, do you have a rough estimate on the number of citizens engaged in this process through the various steering committees, the different open houses? Do you guys have an idea of how many people participated and were engaged in the process from the beginning to the end?
I don't know. Avery, if you've got a second hand.
I don't have a specific number, and that is because, or due to, the significant amount of commitment on the part of a number of different community residents occurring and coming to multiple public events. And so there were certainly, as far as the head counts go at each event, numerous people who were counted multiple and triple times. However, in terms of a broad count, we're looking at a figure somewhere between 200 and 300 persons who, between the March meeting to begin this process, to the November 17 meeting, which wrapped up the presentation of the future land use plan, as I referenced in the PowerPoint here a minute ago. Yeah, we had somewhere between 200 and 300 different persons signing in, so.
Yeah. And I'm gonna add a little bit to that, Mr. Mayor. It's very interesting, because the focus group efforts in particular, each one of those focus groups probably had 30 people on average within those focus groups, and those people devoted a significant amount of time and really opened up a lot of conversation that fed the various action strategies that we're recommending. So I feel like even with those numbers, as Avery's talking about, not only was it a matter of the number, but the quality of conversation that we had in those groups was very high-level conversation compared to many other communities that we work in.
I would agree. I had the chance to attend a number of these forums and open houses, and I think the input that was received was robust and well-informed in many cases.
Yeah.
Counsel, discussion?
Well, one of the things that, you know, one of the early points that, and I don't remember if it was Avery or who had mentioned it, that we need to remember that this is a comprehensive plan and it's a policy guide. And the other thing that I picked off one of his earlier statements, too, is that it's flexible and it goes to changing conditions. And so we're looking at 10 and 20 years out. We're not looking at specific end uses, so, you know, whether, you know, somebody may say, "Well, I want to do a automobile dealership there." That's not what this is addressing. This is addressing overall uses or overall guides for how an area is to develop. So when you try and get down to that specificity, that's not what this plan gives us. It gives us a guide.
Again, to remember a roadmap for community development opportunity. One of the few things that I was particularly interested in as a result of this was obviously a fresh look at land use designations and related zoning, maybe addressing some of those zoning applications as we implement this that may have become outdated. Another one, an annexation analysis. It's been some time since the community has undergone annexation, and to have that information, at least to have a platform of information to use to initiate those cost-benefit analysis, I think is important. And thirdly, designation of a riverfront downtown corridor for community growth, because that area is in such a position to grow in a way that will benefit the community, I think that's important. And I think all those things were accomplished in this plan, so we appreciate the work and the engagement that was put into this by not only our consultants, but the entire city staff, so. Any other comments, discussion? If not, I will close this public hearing and ask Beth for a planning commission report.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on January 18, 2017, to amend Section 19.5 of the Official City Code to adopt the City of Norfolk Comprehensive Plan Update. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the amendment on a seven-to-zero vote.
At that, I will close the public hearing, move to item number 28, and this is consideration of ordinance number 5448 approving adoption of the 2017 comprehensive plan for the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, in that area in which the city is exercising its extraterritorial jurisdiction and repeal of the 2001 City of Norfolk Comprehensive Plan, along with its 2006 transportation and 2015 energy element updates by adopting and amending Section 19-5 of Norfolk City Code. I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I offer for consideration ordinance number 5448.
Second? Any discussion among council? If not, I want to note a couple of things here before we move forward. A full draft of the plan can be found on the City of Norfolk website, right, Val?
Yes, under the Planning and Zoning Department, there's a full draft of tonight, what is before you in the agenda packet, yes.
Okay. And can you give us an idea how long that the plan, this draft or draft of the plan has been out to the public, is accessible to the public?
The one that actually got on the agenda packet tonight has been on the Planning and Zoning page since, I believe, Friday, but a draft has been on there pretty close to what is on here with a few revisions from Planning Commission. That's been on our website since early January.
Okay. Any other comments on process, Val, on moving forward with this?
Again, want to thank everybody, citizens, businesses, other groups, staff, everybody, for all the participation, because it's quite an involved plan that we've gone through for the last year. I'd recommend first reading tonight, and up to you whether you'd like to do second and third, but there is that timeframe in between first and second. If there is something that you want to think about or changes to be made, we can do that.
Okay, thank you. That's a good thought in relation to the process. This is obviously a very significant piece of policy, so you will, that the city's entertaining, and so having that time to have one final look over this, I think, is probably appropriate. So with that, unless there's any other discussion among the council comments. Beth, short term?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend Section 19-5 of the Official City Code to adopt the City of Norfolk Comprehensive Plan Update 2017, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
And please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5448 carries on first reading.
Okay, moving to item number 29. This is a public hearing for the mayor and city council to sit as a board of equalization to consider levying a special assessment in the amount of $590.05 against the property at 504 Lincoln Avenue for mowing, weed control, and litter removal. I think before we get started on this, we need a motion to adjourn as mayor and city council and to convene as the board of equalization. So I'd entertain that motion.
So move your honor.
Second? And please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Okay. John, here to talk to us about this?
Thank you, Baron Counsel. This last September, my office received complaints about weeds that needed to be mowed and litter removed from the property at 504 Lincoln Avenue. We attempted to contact the owner of that property through leaving a notice at the door and through correspondence. That correspondence returned to the office as unclaimed and undeliverable. Notice had been posted on the property on September 14, and compliance was due on the 19th. We went ahead and did the mowing and litter removal on the 20th, city crews did. My understanding, those costs have not been paid to date, and as such, this is a mechanism to have that filed as a lien against that property.
Questions from the council? Thanks, John, for standing on top of that. If no discussion on that, I would close this hearing and entertain a motion to adjourn as the BOE and reconvene as mayor and council.
So move your honor.
Second? Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Okay, moving to item number 30. Consideration of Resolution Number 2017-9 levying a special assessment in the amount of $590.05 against property at 504 Lincoln Avenue for mowing, weed control, and litter removal would entertain a motion.
John, I move consideration of Resolution 2017-9, I believe. Second?
Okay. Any discussion? If not, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, Resolution 2017-9 is adopted.
Item number 31, this is a public hearing to consider an amendment to the City Code revising Division 4 Airport Overlay District, Section 27-261 through Section 27-270. And I think, Val, we'll hear from you to start off discussion.
Yes, number 31 and 33 kind of go together. I don't know if you want to open that one up, too?
Yes, we'll open the hearing on consideration of ordinance number 50, or I'm sorry, the public hearing to consider amendment to the City Code to approve a new airport zoning map. Thanks, Val.
Thank you. In 2013, the state passed LB 140, and this revised the airport hazard areas and specifically extended the three-mile approach hazard area zone to 10 miles. And so what we're doing tonight with this proposed amendment is revising the text so that it matches the LB 140 and then also approving a new airport zoning map that shows those new airport hazard areas of approach, operation, turning, and there's a fourth one, I can't remember. Transition, there we go. And that would be Terry at the airport. She can probably explain what this does better for the airport than I can.
No, Val, you're pretty informed. Terry Walker, Norfolk Airport. I don't know if you've seen, mayor and council members, I don't know if you've seen the, I brought little maps if you want. I don't think that's the right one. Do you have that on your screen?
Yep, we do.
Oh, okay. Okay. This circle here on the map, that's the three-mile radius, and that's been like the hazard area for, I don't know, I think 1945 is when the first zoning regulations were made for airports. So what they're doing now, okay, in that circle, you have your transition zone. So what they're doing now, okay, in that circle you have your transition zone, your operation zone and your turning zone. And now off the end of each runway, they've extended that to 10 miles in like a cone vector shape where the flight path is. And they've added that, the approach zone. And that's to protect public, the public on the, who's ever on the ground. And we're trying to keep away from there any, like towers and buildings. There's, there's so much, like our cell phone towers, the radio, the waves, the radiation, the microwave antennas and stuff like that. Because all of our navades now are electronic and it's, it would be a big interference, it would be a hazard to the airport and airport operations. We want to preserve the airport and especially the public investment in the airport. We want to, we want to keep our airport up to speed on everything. And I don't think, I don't, I think the first zoning regulations for airports was established in 1945. And I've been at the airport 18 years and I don't, now Clint, you might be able to correct me on this, but I don't think we've had any changes.
No, we've, we've cleaned up some things in that time period. The other thing that we've done, you'll recall, is that we've got, we've got, we got some things brushed up at the county so that we had the zoning out in the county.
The zoning out in the county.
We've been stuck with the three miles.
Right, right. And I, a group of city personnel has worked on this for a lot of hours. And I want to especially thank Val because she's done a really good job on it. And I won't name any other names because I would leave somebody out and I don't want to do that. But that's what the LB140 is what the bill is and that's what it's about. That's what they're changing. So I just wanted to make that known. I guess unless you have any questions, that's all I have to say.
No questions for Terry? Yeah.
Terry, one of the things that, when you look at the map that you've got there, which goes with number 33. And also, I know that you don't want to leave anybody out, but there was in the process of working on this, Val and yourself worked with the planners, with the land use regulations from Madison County, Pierce County.
Stanton.
Stanton County and Wayne County doesn't have zoning. But LB140 says that, it's kind of like floodway regulations. Doesn't matter if you have zoning or not, the mandate from the state is that you have to do this to protect airports. And so when you look at that map, the 10 miles goes out into those four counties in addition to the jurisdiction where the, where the City of Norfolk has zoning jurisdiction. So there's been an effort to involve those folks in regard to this and in regard to these regulations. And it's been contemplated by the Airport Authority Board, I think that I'm saying this properly, Terry, that there's going to be some more at such time, assuming that this board, this council takes affirmative action in regard to this, there will be some further discussions with, with those other folks involved so that we get those protections for the Norfolk Airport in all of those various directions and in all of those counties. So this is kind of, this is kind of the start of that and one that we need to run to ground as we go forward. I think that's worth mentioning, the work that you did with those other folks.
Thank you.
Your comments, clearly the airport is a very important piece of our community's infrastructure. And we appreciate the collaborative efforts to modernize our airport zoning policies.
Good for economic development, to keep it up to date, for sure.
Thanks Terry. This is a public hearing. Any other comments, discussion among council? If not, I'll close the public hearings and ask Beth for a planning commission report.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on January 18th, 2017 to amend Chapter 27, Article 13, Division 4, Airport Overlay District in Section 27, 261 through 270. The Planning Commission recommends approval on the amendment on a seven to zero vote. And then the Planning Commission held a public hearing on January 18th to approve the airport zoning map for the city and approved it on a seven to zero vote.
Thank you Beth, I was ahead of myself now and we'll close the hearings. And we'll move to number, item number 32, consideration of ordinance number 5449 approving an amendment to the city code by revising Division 4, Airport Overlay District, Section 27-261 through Section 27-270. Entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll introduce ordinance 5449 on first reading.
Second. Discussion.
Again, Your Honor, it's, it's an asset, as Terry noted out there, that the city has lots and lots of money involved in and we need to protect it. So this is one avenue of protecting it, so.
No further comments. Beth, short title?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska to amend Chapter 27, Article, excuse me, 13, Division 4, Airport Overlay District to provide regulation within the 10 mile approach area of an airport to modify airport overlay provisions to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5449 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, as this is more or less a means of updating and becoming more current and we didn't have any objection to any of this at the public hearing portion, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance number 5449 on second and third reading.
No discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5449 carries on second and third.
Okay, moving to item number 34, consideration of ordinance number 5450 approving a new airport zoning map. Entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll introduce ordinance 5450 on first reading.
Second. Discussion? If not, please vote. Oh, short title, sorry.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska to approve the official airport zoning map of the city and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Now, if no further discussion, have a vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5450 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, for the same reasons Jim gave them personally there, with no objections, I think we may as right away have a move, we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5450 on second and third.
Second. Okay, question? Alright, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5450 carries on second and third.
Okay, moving to the regular agenda, item number 35. Consideration of Ordinance Number 5451 to amend Section 24-1642 effective March 1st, 2017, restrict parking on the east side of North Pine Street from Norfolk Avenue to Nebraska Avenue and on the north side of East Nebraska Avenue from First Street to Pine Street. Would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move consideration of ordinance 5451.
Second. Okay, for discussion on this, I think we're looking to Chief Meisner, chief.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of the council. Ordinance Number 5451 proposes to change the, restrict the parking on the east side of North Pine Street from Norfolk Avenue to Nebraska Avenue and then restrict the parking on the north side of Nebraska, East Nebraska Avenue from First Street over to North Pine Street. With the, for the closing of the bridge for construction over on East Norfolk Avenue, this is going to create the potential where traffic will seek to go around on these streets to bypass that closed bridge. We're not proposing that this would be a detour, but we're anticipating that there will be some who will find it and start utilizing that. If the traffic increases at all, that's kind of a residential area. And so by restricting the parking there, it will allow for a little more room for vehicles to maneuver through there. But it will still accommodate some of the people who have been parking there overnight. The police division checked about a week, week and a half ago, just, I had a night shift check to see how many vehicles were actually parked on the street that night. I believe there were 11 that they counted there. With the parking that will be left there, that will accommodate their parking needs, but still give enough room if we have some additional parking. There was some consideration given to taking parking off of both sides of the street. However, we felt that should we do that, we might have a little trouble controlling speeds with the wide open streets. So we're hoping that this will be a good compromise. Glad to answer any questions.
In the event of a snow emergency, are they still allowed to park on that one side of the road?
We would have to make an exception for that. We would have to, to see what that even side is and we would, we would make an exception for that because it's a relatively new thing. If we would have snow there, we're certainly not going to penalize people for trying to comply with the new ordinance. And yet, if they might find themselves at odds with a snow emergency, we would work with them on that.
Chief, when this project is done, will that, this ordinance be lifted then?
Yes, we would intend that as soon as that is taken care of and done, we would have a transition back to the way it is right now.
Okay, thank you. Chief, do you have plans to monitor speed?
We will. We are going to add some additional start, or speed limit signs on there just to remind vehicles going through there that that is a 25 mile an hour speed limit there. We will ask our area cars to monitor the area. If need be, we might also put our speed trailer over there that will have the speed flashing as they go through there just to try to remind them that that's what the speed is. We'd really like to avoid writing tickets if we possibly could. So those that want to comply and work with us, we're going to do all we can to avoid that. As normal, those that don't want to work with us, well, we're hoping to see them.
Thank you.
Questions for chief? Chief, thanks for your work on this as part of a more comprehensive plan to promote safety as our traffic naturally increases in this area due to the bridge construction. All right, any further discussion? If not, short title, Beth?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska to amend Section 24-164 of the official city code to prohibit parking on the east side of Pine Street from Norfolk Avenue to Nebraska Avenue to prohibit parking on the north side of Nebraska Avenue from First Street to Pine Street to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5451 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I would move to suspend the rules and pass this on second and third. As I understand, the commencement date actually is the first of March and that way it'd allow city staff and crews time to get signs up. And again, it doesn't start until the first of March.
Okay, very good. If no discussion on that, ask you to vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5451 carries on second and third.
Okay, moving on, item number 36, bear with me here. Consideration of Resolution Number 2017-10 to effective March 1st, 2017, add stop signs to control the following locations. East and westbound traffic at the intersection of Pine and Brash Avenue. Westbound and southbound traffic at the intersection of Pine Street and Nebraska Avenue. North and southbound traffic at the intersection of Cottonwood and Nebraska Avenue. And southbound traffic at the intersection of Oak Street and Nebraska Avenue. And also authorizes placing of a 25 mile per hour speed limit sign at the following four locations. 100 block North Pine Street for northbound traffic. 200 block North Pine Street for southbound traffic just south of East Nebraska Avenue. 100 block East Nebraska for eastbound traffic just east of the open parking area. And the 300 block East Nebraska for westbound traffic just west of North Pine Street. Would look, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'd offer Resolution 2017-10 for consideration.
Okay, chief, I think it's up to you on this as well.
Yes, Your Honor, since you went ahead and listed all the locations there, I think I will skip going through that all again.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Again, this would be the same streets that we were talking about before. We're doing this because of the bridge closing. And so we will place these stop signs there so that the traffic that will be going north on North Pine Street and then east and west on Nebraska Avenue, they will have the, basically the right of way to go through there. There was some discussion about whether this would be necessary or not. We felt that if you start having traffic going through there, the people that are normally used to driving on there may not start looking for vehicles and there's just the potential for a collision at some of those intersections. So we thought better be safe than sorry, so by putting those stop signs in there, we hope that we would reduce, if not eliminate, some of those potential collisions.
Thank you. Questions, discussion, council?
I would just make, this is Dennis, I would just make one comment. We hope that the citizens will continue to patronize all of those businesses that are going to be inconvenienced by the bridge construction to the east there. So encourage you to remember those folks as we move forward with the great improvement we're making on Norfolk Avenue this summer.
Yeah, thank you Dennis, important to note that this is a big construction project. It's going to take a few months. Access to those businesses will be more challenging, but several avenues will be open. And like as Dennis said, encourage the public to keep in mind that those businesses on East Norfolk Avenue are certainly open for business and need our support during this time. Further discussion, questions on council? If not, Beth? Oh, okay, we just need a vote. Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, Resolution 2017-10 is adopted.
Item 37, consideration of ordinance number 5452 amending Section 25-7 of the code to increase the number of members of the tree advisory board. Looking for a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move for consideration of ordinance number 5452.
Okay. And is Diane here to talk about this?
I can speak to it, Your Honor.
All right.
The tree advisory board, as Mayor Councilmen and the community know, formed a number of years ago, have really been proactive and active in their desire to continue to improve in a landscaping manner of a lot of our community. They've been a great bunch of folks. We've had a pretty good core of the people that have continued to be engaged with Boss, one or two. And I believe Mayor, you know, if you want to speak to it directly, wanted to increase the number there to have a greater, larger footprint and more active, active participation from a larger group of citizens. Because this board, again, is really focusing on a number of things, from the Emerald Ash Board to landscaping projects, to retraining of parks, to retraining of encouraging private citizens if they lose a tree on their private grounds. So they're a wealth of knowledge, of great experienced people on there. From horticulturists to arborists to just general tree and landscaping enthusiasts that are participating in the tree board. And expanding that to a larger number will only increase their effect in, in my opinion. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know this is something near and dear to Mayor Sartre as we go forward.
I've been asked this before and I did not answer. How do you contact the tree advisory board? What do you, what do you have to do? What do you, what process do you go through?
Well, good, that's a great question. You can do it a number of ways. You can do it through our website or you can do it by directly calling into the City of Norfolk. Diane, our communications director is highly involved in that, as well as Pat Mersnich, Parks and Recreation Director, or city administrator for that matter. And you can leave your comments with those people or leave it online on our website.
Okay, thanks Shane. Yeah, this is one of our more active citizen boards and has been very proactive in the last few years in dealing with some of the challenges that Shane mentioned. And in the coming years will be, their engagement will be even more important as we seek to continue to increase trees in our city landscape and beautify some of our corridors. I've, you know, I've heard comments, people are seeing trees coming down in preparation for auction projects. for action projects in our city, the East Norfolk Avenue Bridge and the library. We do have a policy of whenever a tree comes down to try and plant two trees for every one that comes down. So I think that's an important policy to maintain, and we'll continue those efforts with a inactive and robust tree advisory board, and I think this effort increases their strength. So any discussion among council, comments? If not, short title, Beth.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska to amend Section twenty-seven, twenty-five dash seven of the official city code to increase the number of members of the tree advisory board, to provide when this ordinance shall be full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance fifty-four fifty-two carries on first reading.
Your honor, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance Number fifty-four fifty-two on second and third reading.
Second. Okay, no discussion on that, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance fifty-four fifty-two carries on second and third.
Item number thirty-eight. Consideration of approval of the mayor's appointment of Hope Boss to the tree advisory board, replacing Jessica Jasnan, who is moving from the city, and appointing Ada Peterson, Stan Staub, and April Barton as new members to the tree advisory board, which increases the board membership to eight. Would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Discussion among council? If not, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Okay, before we conclude here, I think Dennis has an announcement.
Yes, since the first of January, we've had another engineer on staff to replace Mark Colichek. It's John Cahill. He's here this evening. I'll let John come up and introduce himself and give you just thirty-second comments about who he is and where he came from.
You want me to sign in, sir?
Go ahead.
My name's John Cahill. I just graduated college from South Dakota School of Mines and Technology in Rapid City, South Dakota. Freshly married, freshly moved here, and be happy to help you out as much as I can, but I am fresh out of school and still learn a lot from Dennis and John, but I'm excited to be here and excited to learn new stuff, so.
Welcome, John. You don't happen to be a K-State fan, do you?
No, sir.
Thank you, very much. Nice to have you here.
Inside joke, John, inside joke. School of Mines, though, I think it's important, we have a, we have a nice pipeline with the School of Mines here in Norfolk with various young engineers that come into town to support our industry. So very glad to have you, welcome aboard, and look forward to exciting things the next few years. With that, we'll conclude this meeting in the Norfolk City Council. Evening.